Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting for October 2nd, 2019. Our inspirational word for the day comes from Proverbs, "In the end, people appreciate frankness more than flattery."
Little girl, let's go for a walk. Oh, my gosh, she is so sweet and precious and she's going to make somebody a great pet. She's available at our dog kennel today, so after you leave this meeting, go over there and pick her up. Aw, you can just drag her around and mop your floors with her, whatever. You know, she's really sweet. So come, pick her up if you want to see our other dogs. You could check us out on Facebook page. Thank you.
She's already calling me, Mom.
Come on.
Yeah. This morning, we have several proclamations. And Madam Clerk, if you'd read the first one?
The first one is proclaim October 11th as Tim Alcorn Day in Lorraine County.
And we have a celebrity in the house here, Tim Alcorn. We're going to call Tim forward. If you please come to this podium over here, we'd like to recognize you this morning. Had the opportunity to note Tim for a long time. We were just talking about going back to actually the 1980s when we worked together. I don't know if many folks in Illyria remember the old TV-35, the cable TV station, which we jokingly said was kind of like working at Wayne's World. We did everything kind of on a shoestring budget. And obviously, you've had the chance to watch Tim progress throughout his career and now reach his dream job. So we wanted to bring you in today to recognize you, Tim, for your accomplishments throughout life and then this latest accomplishment. I'm sure there'll be even many more to come. Soon, we'll see you on the national broadcast, I'm sure, doing all the NBA stuff. So in the matter of recognizing Tim Alcorn in Lorraine County, Ohio, Tim is a graduate of Midview High School, 27 years in broadcasting, recently received his dream job being the play-by-play man and radio voice of the Cleveland Cavaliers. Tim started as a sportscaster in northeast Ohio in 1985, beginning his career at W O B L. He also had to play some country music in addition to doing sports.
News and sports.
News and sports, okay. And he's an alumni of Kent State University, Golden Flash, right?
And Lorraine County Community College.
And Lorraine County Community College, right. Okay. Joined W E O L in 1992. Of course, we need to point out, you can also find W E O L at 100.3, right? On the FM dial. He also is a member of the Illyria Umpires Hall of Fame. They could have used you last night with the balls and strikes being called in that playoff game. Tim has served as co-host of Countdown at the Q for the Cavs and from the dugout for the Indians. He also previously filled in as play-by-play announcer for the Arena Football Cleveland Gladiators and as a pre-game halftime, post-game studio host of the Cavaliers Radio Network, which includes flagship station WTAM 1100 AM and WMMS 100.7 FM. I mean, he will now be heard in 48 states and half of Canada, right? By being on a 50,000-watt radio station. Tim is a three-time winner of the Ohio Associated Press Best Broadcaster/Sports Broadcaster Award, and he serves on the Committee of the Midview and Illyria Sports Hall of Fame. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Lorraine County Commissioners that we hereby proclaim October 11th as Tim Alcorn Day in Lorraine County. We were trying to decide whether we were going to choose the official opening day of the season or the first exhibition game, but we figured since that first game in Detroit is on October 11th, that we would make that Tim Alcorn Day. So all the broadcasters in Lorraine County get the day off with pay. And you'll be working.
I've heard we get tickets to the game.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we got to travel to Detroit, I guess, right? But do you like to say a few words, Tim?
Well, my time in Lorraine County certainly isn't coming to an end. It may be on W E O L, although we were talking on the walkover with 82 Cavs games. I may be heard more on W E O L in the next six months than I have in the past. But no, it's been a wonderful run as far as working radio here in the area. Lorraine County will always be a part of me. Met my wife here and our four children went to school here, so Lorraine County is certainly embedded in me. It's in my bones. But I'm obviously incredibly excited about moving on to the next chapter, but I'm honored by this and I'm humbled by this, so I thank you very much for your kind remarks.
Okay. Well, we'd like to come down and present this to you and take a picture so we can say that we knew you went, you know.
Well, I knew you went.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, Madam Clerk.
Proclaim October 4th as Manufacturing Day in Lorraine County. Don?
And I have a proclamation for that. Whereas, October 4th, 2019, has been designated National Manufacturing Day by a Consortium of American Manufacturers, and October has been designated Manufacturing Month by the state of Ohio to bring the career potential of manufacturing to students and our transitioning workforce. Lorraine County has a long, proud tradition of manufacturing dating back to shipbuilding in 1819, steel in 1894, and automobiles in 1904, with nationally recognized educational institutions Oberlin College founded in 1883, Lorraine County Community College in 1964, and Lorraine County Joint Vocational School in 1971. Lorraine County is home to 16,566 manufacturing jobs at 389 manufacturing companies. By 2030, nearly 80% of the baby boomer generation will have left the workforce and will need to be replaced by workers with qualified training, workers looking to continue to make America and Lorraine County great. A.J. Rose Manufacturing in Avon, Ohio, a leading manufacturer of precision-formed metal products and assemblies to the automotive truck, agricultural, industrial, and commercial markets, is hosting the Lorraine County Manufacturing Month kickoff event and tours of their facility on Friday, October 4th, to recognize and celebrate the importance of manufacturing in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners that October 4th shall be designated Lorraine County Manufacturing Day in recognition of creating jobs, local manufacturers, and employees who make good sold throughout the world, and educational institutions providing our next generation of workers with skills to succeed. Signed by Lorraine County Commissioners Matt Lundey, Lori Gukowski, and Sharon Sueda. And is Don Romano secure?
Bodie Murray.
Darn, he is there. Okay, Don, take it away. Looking, where is he? There he is.
Thank you, Board. This is perhaps one of my favorite times of the year. Lets me talk a little bit about Lorraine County, and one of the things that I most like to say about the people who live in Lorraine County, the people that I work for as well, is that we produce. We make things. We provide value to the world. And as the economy has changed over the years and we have struggled, we have maintained that work ethic, we have maintained that desire to create, to build, and to produce, and to share what we produce with the rest of the world. And so with October 4th going to A.J. Rose, with us celebrating the fact that we produce with Manufacturing Month being one of those forms that we do produce, I just wanted to share a couple of things with you that manufacturing still accounts for over, just over 16% of our employment within the county, but it generates more than 25% of the payroll, the wages. So these are good-paying jobs. There is still a strong future in manufacturing. What has occurred over the years has been that we get better at making things. We are more productive at doing it. It does take fewer people, and that's a painful reality, but at the same time, it does, because of that productivity that we've been able to create, be able to maintain our manufacturing base. We're able to pay better wages than is normal across the board. Every job in manufacturing will produce another 1.83 jobs elsewhere, so that multiplier effect. It's these jobs that are important. It's those who produce support everyone else. And so with that, I'm grateful to be able to spend a little bit of time with the Board over at A.J. Rose and throughout this month, as our staff and members of the Growth Partnership go into our communities and into our schools, to reintroduce manufacturing as a career, a proud career, and to continue the tradition of our county. So thank you very much for the proclamation. Look forward to Commissioner Sueda joining us over at A.J. Rose, and for all of you and for what you've done throughout every year, making every day really Manufacturing Day and producing, with the investments that you've made throughout our community, through our department, and with the incentives that we've been able to provide over the years. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Just add, we'll also put our work ethic up against anyone else, too. So a good work ethic here in Lorraine County. Madam Clerk.
Okay, next one is celebrating 100 years for Lorraine County Beekeepers Association and Denzel St. Clair, which used to be our AP year years ago, and then also our new AP year, John Michael is here as well.
Great, if you'd like to come up, gentlemen.
Yeah, John, if you'd like to come up as well, too.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we're happy to congratulate you on your 100th anniversary. It seems like there was a lot going on in Lorraine County in 1919 because we've had so many 100-year anniversaries this year, and the Beekeepers Association is one of those organizations. I think it's important to remember that while there are 369,000 flowering plant species, 90% of them are dependent upon insect pollination, and we know that our pollinators, our bees, are definitely in fear of extinction. Things that we have that are affecting, those are pesticides, our change of land use, as well as climate change, and we want to recognize the work you're doing to preserve the bee culture. So on behalf of the Lorraine County Commissioners, we want to congratulate you on your 100th anniversary. Our Board commends you for raising awareness of the importance of honeybees as pollinators while promoting the vital practice of beekeeping. Would you like to add anything?
I would just like to say that I'm glad that I was not a part of the original founders of the organization, but at the same time, I've been an active member for the last 30 years. And we'd like to also show appreciation to the Commissioners for your support of the Lorraine County Beekeepers Association and our inspection program. Thank you very much. That's all. John?
Could you, yeah, could you share with us, I guess, because it's really important to people to know about the status of the bees in the country and the concerns that are being raised?
Lorraine County is really a preeminent organization in the state of Ohio, and we're glad to represent all of the state of Ohio. But you're correct in saying that beekeeping and honeybees are very much in jeopardy every year. Every year in the state of Ohio, we lose anywhere from 30 to 50% of the bees in the state. That's a cost to the beekeepers of this state at about a million and a million and a half dollars, the beekeepers. There's roughly 200 to 300 beekeepers in Lorraine County, and it's growing every year. Our organization teaches anywhere from 100 to 150 new beekeepers in this county every year. And this organization has been asked to represent beekeeping throughout the state of Ohio on numerous occasions. So yes, beekeeping is hazardous to, or puts beekeeping in jeopardy every year because of the things that are going on around the state and around the country. It is really terrible and it's deplorable, and we're working and doing our best to try to remedy the problem, but at this point, the jury's still out on this one.
One of the surprising statistics that I saw was the fact that pollinators contribute to billions in the world economy, and that the production of pollination by bees is actually valued at $577 billion, contributing $24 billion to the US agriculture industry, which makes up a third of the food consumed by Americans. It's amazing.
And honeybees, and that's just pollination. That doesn't go into queen production, package bee industry, honey production, and all the other things that are associated with it. But that's just pollination alone, and pollination affects everyone in this room.
Yes, it does. Well, we'd like to come down and take a picture with you.
Thank you.
When you started the inspection program, you was only five foot six.
Should we do the veterans one first, or you want to do the census?
We can do the veterans one first.
Everybody can get back?
Okay. Okay, why don't we, Madam Clerk, we could do the veterans next?
Okay. We're bumping you up.
Transportation for veterans, Terry Stone, Executive Director of the Veteran Service Commission, as well as Judy Nedwick, Recorder.
Good morning, good morning.
I'm the Executive Director of Lorraine County Veteran Service Office, for those that don't know me. Of course, I'm sure everybody knows Judy Nedwick. Along with me, I brought two of my bosses, Mr. Steve Bansik, one of the Veteran Service Commissioners from AmVets, and Mr. Jose Torres, the Purple Heart Commissioner.
We hope you keep those two in line, so.
I'm trying.
It's the other ones I got to worry about. I came to the meeting today to make a proposal to the County Commissioners. I've discussed this with a couple of people, Jim Cordez and Judy and Ms. Novak. As you're aware, our office transports veterans to their VA medical appointments at the CBAC in Sheffield, at the clinic in Parma, and at Lewis Stokes VA Medical Facility in Cleveland. We also contract through Life Care for the transportation of a number of Lorraine County veterans who are dialysis patients, or the people that the VA has contracted out to other local clinics. Everything that we're allowed to do by Ohio Revised Code, we do. But even with that, we still get a lot of requests from veterans calling saying, "I need to get to the store. I need to get to a restaurant. I need to get to work. I need to get to other areas of the county," which we are not able to do in keeping with the Ohio Revised Code. So my proposal would be to establish a free ride system on Lorraine County Transit for any eligible veteran to get to these other areas of the county. The veterans would have to show a veteran ID card that is issued by the County Recorder's Office in order to get this free ride. Samples of these would be available to the drivers of all the LCT Transit buses, and this would also include dialyride. I've had veterans call me and they use dialyride to get to work because they don't have a vehicle. Anyway, all these, at the end of the month, would be tallied up, and Lorraine County Transit would invoice our office for payment for these rides. We hope that this would be another benefit for our veterans that would use, and which hopefully would, one, increase ridership throughout the county on the bus system, plus it also gives the veterans the ability to move around the county for their other needs above their medical appointments. Many of our clients do not have transportation and have to rely on friends or neighbors who often want money for gas, or their lack of funds for a bus ride because of their financial situation. This would only be available to veterans and make it a lot easier for them to get to places that they'd like to go. This is currently being done in Medina County by their Veteran Service Office, and they tell me it is working very well for them, and it gives their clients a little more independence, which makes them feel like they're receiving another benefit, be it small, for their service to our country. I was told by their director over there that the first month that they enacted it, it increased their bus ridership by 30%. Along with that, to advertise this, I know that's Fairbox money, it's a good thing. Talking to Pam Novak, she said it's not an issue with their end. They have a daily tick sheet that every driver has. She would just add a column for veterans so that they can keep track of it. The other thing to do is to advertise this effectively for a couple of months before we start it, and my advertising would be done on the Lorraine County Transit buses, which would be a plus to the county because I think for every dollar that I spend advertising on the county buses, and there's some kind of help you get, Jim?
Matching money.
Yeah, I was dinging, my apologies. There's nothing like dinging. I should be able to, since we're not doing Fairbox, we're doing a different kind of support payment, I should be able to match those funds. So I'm hopeful.
Well, like I say, and that's one of the things for, at least the first, from now till the end of December, my anticipation is hopefully starting this off the first of the year. So from now until the end of December, I would like to be doing a lot of advertising on all the Lorraine County Transit buses to let them know this is coming.
Great.
And this will be with the Board's approval, since you own the transit systems. And Judy, did you have anything you want to say?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Judy.
Mr. Cordez and Mr. Ennis, my pleasure to be standing here, believe me. You know, we do issue the veterans cards in our office. They are of no charge, as long as your DD-214, your discharge paper is recorded with us at no charge. And I would say the highlight of our day is when a veteran comes in to get that card, and they want to tell their story, and we love to listen to it. We love to make them smile. So when Terry approached me about this program, "How could you say no? Because there's not enough that we can give back to our veterans for what they've done to us." So whatever I can do to help, please let me know. I think it's a great program, and God bless our veterans. That's all.
Thank you.
It was probably only about 10 years ago, and I won't bring up names, but somebody from the Veteran Services stood in here, and I suggested using Transit for transporting veterans, and they told me that the veterans deserve better and shouldn't be on the bus with those people, right in this room. So thank you for partnering with us. I remember that comment. It still rings with me today. So, you know, a lot has changed over the years, and our relationships have changed, and I do appreciate working with you. We get along great, and we've done some great things, and I'm looking forward to more in the future.
I'm hoping that this will, you know, help increase the ridership, maybe help bring some more money in so the bus system can be expanded little by little, and maybe reach out to those areas of manufacturing. I know, I keep reading articles about manufacturers that are having issues with getting employees to their facility because they don't have transportation, so maybe this little bit might help.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Any other questions?
No, no, it's a great idea. We'll definitely check with Medina County, see how things were working there, and, you know, I think that it's a great idea, and I think unfortunately, because of, I remember hearing those comments in the past, too, and so it's nice to know that we're turning a page and moving forward because we always thought that this system, you know, should be even more available to veterans, and this is certainly a way of doing that, and we thank them for their service to our country and our service to our community. And, you know, we obviously want to help them in any way that we can, and this is certainly a step in the right direction and helps us to walk further into our plans of being able to eventually develop a more broader transportation or transit system.
Right, and like I say, I do buy Transit tickets, and, you know, veterans will say, "Hey, I need these to get back and forth to work and stuff." So if, by doing this, instead of me, you know, having Pam send me tickets, and then they have to figure out a way to come and get them, or, you know, if we start making it to where they utilize that card and they get the free ride, then Ms. Novak said she just invoiced me at the end of each month, and we would take care of it.
So if somebody still needs to get their little card that you made, is there anywhere else to get it besides your office, Judy?
Just Judy's office.
Just Judy's office?
No.
And they don't, they just walk in, they don't need an appointment, they just come?
No. They don't need an appointment as long as their discharge paper is recorded. And we have been to various events where we can issue the ID card, which is our pleasure.
Are you doing the JVS like you did last year?
No.
No?
The problem is, people, the veterans, they don't realize the importance of recording that document, and we have no way off-site to record that document, but we get attention that way that they'll come in and record it, you know? I mean, please record those wherever I go.
It doesn't cost anything to record? Does it cost anything to record the document?
There is no charge to a veteran, just a smile.
Yeah.
But, you know, I do want to go back to last week. Judge Walthard and I were at Columbia High School in Amherst, and I talked about it there, the veterans, and, you know, wherever we go, we celebrate the veterans. So there is no charge to a veteran, just that smile when they leave.
All right, cool.
And I think, you know, it's important to, anything we can do to improve the quality of life for our veterans is incumbent upon all of us.
If it gets them to a job, grocery store, a doctor's appointment.
Absolutely. Even without any of the incentives that we're looking at in lieu of, without it, I echo what you say, Judy, we owe that to our veterans.
Yeah, I did talk to the Recorder in Medina County a couple of weeks ago, I think we were at a conference, and I said, "Did you get a big influx of people coming in?" He said they were able to handle it, and how proud Medina is of their service. So I look forward to being a part of it.
It's great.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
It's great to have willing, working partners.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next, if we can move, I guess, to the census?
US Census, Samuel Ariaga, Partnership Specialist.
Good morning. You're going to be a busy man this year.
I think so. Okay, folks, I want to thank you, the Commissioners, and everyone that's here. Basically, this is the 2020 Census briefing. I'm keeping it very brief because of the timeframe. It's geared towards the Lorraine County, and my name is Samuel Ariaga. I'm a Partnership Specialist. I'm going to begin with the goal for the decennial census.
If you could just move that microphone closer to you. There you go, so we can all hear you.
The goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Basically, we do it because it's in the Constitution. Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution basically dictates that we should count the population every 10 years. This is a little...
Okay, Madam Clerk, next, if we can move, I guess, to the census.
U.S. Census, Samuel Ariaga, Partnership Specialist.
You're going to be a busy man this year.
I think so. Okay, folks, I want to thank you, the commissioners, and everyone that's here. Basically, this is the 2020 Census briefing. I'm keeping it very brief because of the timeframe. It's geared towards the Lorraine County, and my name is Samuel Ariaga. I'm a partnership specialist. I'm going to begin with the goal for the decennial census.
If you could just move that microphone closer to you. There you go, so we can all hear you.
Cool. The goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. Basically, we do it because it's in the Constitution. Article one, section two of the Constitution basically dictates that we should count the population every ten years. This is a little brief history. In seventeen ninety, the Secretary of State, Thomas Jefferson, he was the one in charge of it, and he kicked it off. We've done it every ten years since. Fast forward to twenty ten, when we eliminated the long form. That's when we used to send about one in six households, seventy-two questions in two thousand. It was quite laborious. In two thousand five, the Congress thought it was so important that they legislated that we do a continual count. So that kicked off the American Community Survey, which is sent to about two hundred and fifty thousand households nationwide every month. So it gives a constant footprint of what's going on in the country. Twenty twenty will be the first census that we have an online self-response, excuse me. And with that, that brings great opportunity. It gets these younger folks that are very digitally conscious. It makes it easier for them and everyone else who's tech savvy to respond to the questionnaire. But also, there's a great digital divide with some people who are not as savvy on a computer. So with that, the U.S. Census Bureau has partnered with the National Library System, the association, and in Ohio, we've partnered with the Ohio Association of Libraries, and we've used them for places to meet, and also they have dedicated some computers so that people can fill the questionnaire in the libraries. There are four main uses for census data, and these are them: apportionment, redistricting, funding, and planning. I'll cover each separately. Here, we have the congressional seats. Basically, this is the representation that we had before Congress. Those states that are colored in gold, they actually lost seats, and as you see, Ohio went down to sixteen. That was down from eighteen in two thousand. So we hope to gain more this time by having a complete and accurate count for the twenty twenty census. Basically, there's four hundred and thirty-five seats to Congress. Every state gets one, and once those fifty have been exhausted, based on the count in a given area, a formula is done to distribute the remainder. So it's very important to get a complete count. Redistricting, basically, once the census completes, the twenty twenty census provides the President of the United States the results that will be by December thirty-first of twenty twenty. April first of twenty twenty-one, the states and the local officials will receive their counts, and they use them to redraw the boundaries of congressional and state legislative districts, basically adapting to population shifts. This is the big one. I mean, no matter how rich or poor, money makes the world go round, and there is six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars in federal funds that is distributed throughout the nation. And this comes strictly from count. The more people in an area, the more money that community gets. These are some of the examples: SNAP, WIC, housing, pre-K, Head Start, school lunch, school nurses, basically free medical clinics, federal funding for the highways, and just everything else that you could think of, grants and that receives federal fundings. It's all dependent on a good count. Basically, it's also used, the second one is planning. The local governments use it to determine where they need to build new schools, hospitals. Residents use it for consumer advocacy, quality of life. Real estate developers use it to determine where they're going to fix housing, where they're going to build new homes and developments. Businesses also use it to determine where is the best places to build new factories, stores, McDonald's, give it whatever, and to create jobs. Basically, here are the three ways that people can respond. Like I said, first time for online self-response, either by mail with the questionnaire that you're going to receive in the mail, most people, or by phone. So nearly every household is going to receive one. Ninety-five percent of the households will receive it by mail. Five percent that have, some people do not have received their mail at home, they have a P.O. box. The Census Bureau does not deliver to P.O. boxes. So we'll have either a census worker or, well, it would be a census worker bringing it to their home. Less than one percent of the households that are like in remote areas of Alaska, Maine, Indian reservations, will have a census worker actually go out there and count them in person, a census worker. Here, this is a very busy slide. I have one of these in those packets that I gave out. Basically, the big one here that's going on right now, we're about halfway through it, is we're just winding down the address canvassing, where our enumerators are going out and verifying addresses. Basically, it should end, it was started in August, and it should be completed sometime in October. The next one up on the top that's pretty notable is February. That's where we do our group quarters count. This is where we're going to count the college dorms, military bases, penitentiaries, group homes such as senior assisted living, and any place that they live together, missions, outreaches. And one thing I wanted to point out here, April first, a lot of misconception, April first is Census Day. That is our reference day. So some people will receive the mailer in, they're going to start the mail in March twelfth. They'll start mailing out at one of four. The questionnaire is based, when you answer the questions, is as of the reference day. Where were you? Because some people won't respond till May or June. Those be part of our non-response. These are the historically undercounted groups. These are the ones primarily why I got hired for Lorraine County, because these groups are undercounted. Under five, the basically the age group eighteen to twenty-four, these are young people that are either they left the home, they're going to college, or they just started working, but basically they just don't basically self-respond. Veterans, for whatever reason, some of them, non-English speakers, immigrants, persons with disability, seniors, and shaddens. So this historically undercounted group is one of the reasons we use this tool, the Response Outreach Area Mapper. It is available to all citizens on twenty twenty, actually, census.gov. I believe it's on twenty twenty census.gov also. It is free. Anybody can use it. A lot of our partners and Complete Count Committee members use it as a tool. It's, you could go in there and pretty much figure it out, but we also offer training on this, if anybody would like it. One of the biggest things is confidentiality and privacy. A lot of people are apprehensive on giving out their information. One thing to note is Title thirteen, section nine of the U.S. Code. Basically, it says that we will keep any citizen's personal identifiable information confidential. Their responses are used just for statistics. Our product from the Census Bureau is statistic-driven only, is not by any personal identifiable. All census workers take, they pass a security check, and they take a lifetime oath to confidentiality. They do so under penalty of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or and/or prison for five years. I don't have either, so. So we take it very seriously. This slide and this slide are very much related, but the one that I wanted to point out on this one is that there are no exceptions. We do not share information, personal information, with other agencies like Border Patrol, immigration, law enforcement, the IRS. We are, the information, when it comes to us, it goes into a box and it stays with us. And basically, as we get closer to the twenty twenty census, the bottom right-hand side of this slide that says we will never ask for someone's social security number, we'll never ask for donations or anything on behalf of, like, whether you're any political party or any bank information, because there will be a lot of scams as this gears up. Basically here, just like I said, the three ways to self-respond on this slide is basically where it says Spanish and the other eleven languages. There'll be twelve languages that you could self-respond, and those are them. There are fifty-nine other languages that they're going to have to coordinate, but there are fifty-nine other languages that we can get people to respond with. This is the Complete Count Committee. Basically, the census is looking to collaborate with local governments, organizations to set up a CCC, if it's feasible. That represents a broad range of community interests. Volunteers will play a major role in census outreach and promotional activities for its community and its members. These are the three phases. I believe the education phase has been extended throughout the year. And the biggest thing is there's people from Washington and Philadelphia, from the Philadelphia region. They'll be, the local citizens will be more apt to listen to people from their communities rather than somebody from Washington, even though I live in Elyria. Successful census communities and CCCs, basically, the reason they, the response rate is a whole lot better when the community is aware that it's coming. It's sort of like that road trip when the young kids are saying, are we there yet? Are we there yet? Here, when they keep hearing census, 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 when they finally get the questionnaire in the mail, they'll be like, oh, this is what they're talking about. It's ten questions. So, and the second point here about using the Rome program that I spoke of, the low response scores. One of the things that I wanted to mention here was low response scores, that Rome application, it'll have different colors on there. The darker the blue, the higher the low response score. That's counterintuitive. The higher that score is, the worse it is. Elyria has a very high, Elyria and Lorraine have, those two cities have the highest LRS in Lorraine County, and I'm working with both cities. Basically, we we're looking for people to be employed because we're looking for people from the local community to work for the census so we can count their own communities. Form CCCs at multiple levels. Last week, today's Wednesday, last week, last Wednesday, the governor kicked off the state Complete Count Committee, and he's he's looking forward to eighty-eight other counties participating, one way or another. This is a sample CCC membership. I have a similar piece of paper in there that shows a sample, I think it's for the municipality. Every community is different. This is just a sample, but it gives you an idea of who should be on there. We're looking for, basically for engagement with our with our partners, that they invite us to their events, their meetings, connect us with any representative in their network. Basically, encourage census participation to the community through either the websites, social media posts, or newsletters. Form a Complete Count Committee if possible, and basically assist us in employment, basically promote employment opportunities that we have, and like I said about the libraries. So that's my briefing. Any questions? This is my contact information. Each of you have my card in there, and I open it up for any questions.
Sam, when you when you mentioned that we we went from eighteen to sixteen in Ohio, and that's why you're concerned about an accurate count and making sure that we get the correct statistics, do you attribute any of that reduction to to miscounted individuals or or oversight or or an identifiable gap that we had?
Well, that's yes, because that's, yes, that's the that's the reason, like I said, Elyria and Lorraine, they had, they're in the high twenties and the low thirties, some portions, not the whole city, because every block and tract is basically represented on that map, and there'll be some that everybody responds, and then right next to it, it'll be dark blue that for some reason, people like renters, college students that live right outside of LCC, that just, they don't take it seriously and they don't respond. Buildings where I live at, there's twenty-four apartments in my building, and the FedEx guy, if he can't get in, he doesn't drop off anything, and that's that's hard to count on April first, when those counters go out. If people are not taking that questionnaire in the mail and self-responding, basically, that's going to hurt our count. And if you put any number on that, say two thousand, because there was a study that we quoted, but we don't quote it anymore because we've been told not to, but it's in the vicinity of two thousand, some places more, some places less. That's two thousand per person that's not counted for ten years in your community. And it 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 gets, it gets high pretty quick. I forget. What was the second part of your question?
I think I just basically wanted to know if you attributed that decline.
What I wanted to talk about, I'm sorry. I just don't want to forget. The historically, like, the undercounted?
Yes.
The children under five. A lot of times that happens, like me, the reason I moved here is because I have eight of my grandchildren here. And at one point, we were living with them when we first got here, and now I've had my daughter and my grandchildren live with us. If that survey gets to me on April first, and I only mark down me and my wife, or I decide just to blow it off, that means me, my wife, my daughter, and my four grandchildren don't get counted. And in two thousand ten, they were undercounted by two point four million. But what happened was they were overcounted, duplicated, so either a grandparent or a father counted them, and then the mother, they split up, they counted them, so it was one point three. So yet, it wound up being a net deficit of one point one million, and that's children in the country.
Especially knowing we need that aid money coming back.
Yes, we do. Every community needs it, and it's very important. So I thank you for your time. Are any other questions?
Well, we're, you know, we're a very diverse county, and, you know, diversity is something we embrace in this county and welcome and and feel it's a strength of ours. Unfortunately, leading up to the census, because of how immigration has become such a big issue, I guess the concern is that lots of families may go into hiding when they really don't have a reason to go into hiding, just for fear of the the color of their skin possibly being questioned or picked up in some way. So I guess I'm asking you, how's that conversation going to go in in the community, you know, probably primarily more so in Lorraine than other parts of our county, with those families to assure them that this will be kept confidential, that you're not operating for ICE or anything of that nature, that you're there just to gather information?
Yes. I am actively working with Lorraine City. They have actually decided to have a Complete Count Committee. We probably would have already had their training, other than one of the individuals had a medical situation, he's the go-to person there, but I anticipate doing their training within the next two weeks. So they're going to have a Complete Count Committee, and hopefully they'll have places like El Centro and any other places like Valor Homes, St. Elizabeth's, and those type of places to make sure that those communities are outreach to, basically by local trusted voices like yourselves and anybody from the community that they know them, and when they say that the information that I just tried to convey, they let them know that your information is confidential, it's not ever going to be, you know, divulged for seventy-two years. That's one of the important things. I mean, seventy-two years, if I'm still around, man, that'd be some, that'd be something. But the question will not be on the survey, well, it's not a survey, it's a questionnaire. The the questionnaire has already been printed. The citizenship question is not on it. It is not on the online platform, and it won't be asked. So, I mean, hopefully, that alleviates a little bit of their apprehension. The only thing we can do is try to reach out to those people that are Um, the only thing we can do is try to reach out to those people, the outreach to them. And that's one of the purposes I have in a complete count committee.
Yeah, well sadly, you know, we still have a lot of, uh, individuals. And I've had these conversations with Victor Leandry and others in the community that I know even when I was a state representative and held town hall meetings and we were, uh, dealing with immigration issues in Columbus and the legislature, that I would still have people show up at my town hall meeting and make the crazy assertion that, uh, um, there's too many undocumented, uh, or illegal Puerto Ricans in Lorraine. And I'm like, "That's a US territory. What are you talking about?" Um, so, I, I mean, there's an education component to this as well, too.
Yeah.
We need to create an environment of safety for them. And I think using the trusted, uh, individuals in their community is gonna go a long way if, if we can at least have those safety zones where they are approached and individuals that they feel they trust, um, reaching out and assuring them that it's, it is a safe thing for them to do.
Yeah. And I think especially working with the faith-based community, um, you know, whether it's Sacred Heart or some of, some of the other churches throughout the community, I think would be, you know, great help. And El Centro and Victor Leandry can ask for a better organization and a better group of people over there to work with the community. Um, I guess I'd also like to ask you about, um, everybody's always looking for a good job opportunity. It sounds like the government's, uh, paying pretty well, right?
There are jobs. A lot of them too. Um, I'm gonna, actually the 20th to the 27th, that week where it's a national recruiting effort that we're doing. When I leave here, I'm gonna go to, um, the Urban League and see if, um, I can get some type of, any activity that's happening that week or close to it. Um, I would set up a table. Or if I'm not able to do it, one of my rep, one of my representatives from the Census Bureau, um, we're doing a recruiting drive. And it's basically to hire partnership specialists doing the same job that I do, and also others. And they're good-paying jobs.
Yeah, around $15 an hour, some positions?
They're $15 an hour or more, depending on what you do.
Nice.
Okay, good. And, uh, do you want to give us a quick, uh, you know, website or something where people should go from?
Um, census.gov. For jobs, census.gov. I think it's forward slash?
Yeah, forward slash. Jobs. Okay. Very good.
There is a Valor Home event that week, so that may be a...
Go over there and talk to Ms. Wright.
Yes. It's gonna be right at the, uh, VFW at 1662, that week.
Yeah, I've reached out to her, so I will do that. Thank you.
Great.
Yeah. And thank you. And then obviously, if you wanna keep us posted, if you're running any snags along the way, any way that we can help out or be a resource to you, we're, we're here to be that resource.
I have all your points of contact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your work.
My card, dare let me know.
Go get 'em all.
Okay, presentations. Hopefully she brought us something to eat, you know, no. Burger battle and cupcake crawl. This is Lorraine County.
Burger battle. I can't wait for the burger battle.
That's what I said. Sample times.
We have to do some road trips.
Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Jen Kennedy, and I'm the interim director at Visit Lorraine County. And I feel like I'm always here talking about food.
Yeah, you never bring us any.
We always like it.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna start with the burger battle, uh, which this is our third burger battle here in Lorraine County. It is October 10th through the 20th. And, um, we're really excited about this year. We're really excited about the amount of effort that our restaurants have put in. And it's nice because, you know, it takes a few times for the restaurants to kind of get the gist of what's going on. Um, so we're really excited about the, the effort. Uh, we also have developed a loyal list of participants. So, people that have done it every year, uh, people that have done our other events that are really looking forward to the burger battle. So, here we go. Um, this year we have 12 local restaurants that are, uh, competing for the title of the best burger in Lorraine County. It is October 10th through the 20th. Um, it is 10 days. We've kind of been testing the time period. If, as you know, we've done a week, uh, we've done 10 days. What we found is that after 10 days, people kind of start to forget about it. Participation, you know, wanes off. And it's also hard on our restaurants, uh, to do more than 10 days, which is two weekends and during the week. Um, it is a lot of restaurants to get in during 10 days. Uh, but, you know, after surveying participants, surveying restaurants, we found that that 10-day period seems to be the magic window. As you know, what we're trying to accomplish is let, um, people from inside and outside the county know that we have great restaurants. Uh, we need to have people have an understanding, one, if you live in the county or the surrounding areas, to act as our advocate. There's a great place. I love to get their burger. You know, it's in Amherst. Try something new. You know, if they have relatives and friends that come in from out of town, we want them talking about our restaurants. Um, so it's really important to get people out, moving around. Um, again, it is so nice to hear people from Avon come into our office, or people from Illyria come into our office and say, "I never go to Avon. I never go to Avon Lake." Or, in, you know, "I never go to Amherst. And I'm so glad because we found this, and we found this, and we found this along the way." Um, and overall, what it's doing is that's helping our locally-owned restaurants. Um, it's giving people that are visiting something new to try, something new to talk about. Uh, and it's giving us things to hype. Participating restaurants, as you know, we kind of only give out one trophy, um, one crown, if you will. They will, all of the burgers will be competing for the title of best burger. Uh, they will be, that will be available for $9 during this time period. Most of the burgers are somewhere between $10 and even $15. So this does, um, represent a significant price reduction. Uh, that's no fries, you know, it's just the burger during regular business hours. And all of the burgers that are in the burger battle are not available on the regular menu. So this is kind of a limited time come, because if you always go to the same place, this gives you a reason to try to go back. Um, how we are spreading the word, uh, digital display advertising has worked really, really well for us, as well as social media advertising. Um, just that viral effect just really, really works. Um, again, we're doing geofencing. Um, I talk about geofencing all the time, but I wanted to, to note that we're trying something completely different when we geofence. If you remember, the geofence is just dropping a net around people that are in that establishment. We've tried to net, if you will, hospitals. We've tried to net restaurants. We've tried to net busy gas stations, uh, because, you know, places that people tend to be looking at your phone. I was talking to Amanda and said, "Hospitals are a perfect place because you're sitting for 45 minutes doing nothing but looking at your phone." Um, so, once they've clicked on our ad or showed interest in our ad, then we're able to continue to target them. This time, what we actually thought we would do, um, was try the participating restaurants. So we're casting a net around the participating restaurants. And when they scroll onto Facebook to take the ever-so-famous pictures of their food, then they will keep getting delivered the ad so that they will continuously be reminded during that time period to try the other places. So, it's a little something new. What we do is we take the data that worked, data that didn't work, and we blend them to continuously evolve so we're not getting stale. Again, we create those look-alike targets. We look at the people that have participated in the past, and then we find the virtual look-alike. For instance, what do they like? What are their age groups? What are their ranges? So we use that data, um, to target the right people. Uh, we will do a radio. Uh, we also work with our partners, W O I O, who get us on their, um, their morning show there. And thank you to Commissioner Sueda who came out, um, and did the cupcake crawl and the burger battle appearances. Um, so those are always really fun. Uh, what we actually tried to do as well is there is a, a former Plain Dealer video editor who's Emmy nominated, who lives in Lorraine, who has been doing some great video packages for us. Um, and what we've actually been doing with those is not only do they increase where we are, they bump us up in the Google rankings, um, but they increase our views on Facebook. So, of course, instead of looking at a stale ad, someone watches a 15 to 30-second video, you're much more engaged. Sometimes I'm guilty of just letting the video run a couple times, putting my phone down, getting distracted. Um, but, you know, it's just getting it out there. And then that, of course, increases our virality, increases our Google rankings, um, and our engagement. Um, so, we're, we're using those videos. Um, it's been really nice working with John. Um, of course, we have our landing page, so people can just jump right to the page and they can see it. They don't have to search, making it easy for people. Um, and then we're gonna call, of course, on our local press partners and some advertising as well. As always, we do our window clings, posters, table tents. Um, this year we're trying a little something different with our burger battle passports, just based on some feedback from participants, um, and the restaurants. Uh, we will do, um, a Q and A for the staff, um, and then the ballots. Uh, here are the participating restaurants. Uh, I'm really happy that, um, we have some new communities represented this year. Um, so, as you can see, we've got more in the Grafton area. We've got Wellington, um, all the way to Avon Lake. So I feel pretty good that we have a, a pretty strong representation throughout the entire county. Um, I will read them off here just so that we know, but we have Bootleggers in Columbia Station, Brickyard Bar and Grill, which was the former Sturks in Oberlin, Brew Kettle in Amherst, Bulldog Pub, uh, there in Grafton, which Jim, I think was, uh, your suggestion at the last meeting there. They are new on board. Uh, we have The Depot at Union Station, The Foundry Kitchen and Bar in Illyria, who's been a true and tried partner, uh, partner every year. Mutton Jeff's in Lorraine, which is last year's crowned winner. Um, Nancy's Main Street in Grafton, uh, Parker's in Avon Lake, who has also been a participant every year. Red Iron Bar and Grill in Wellington, who, as you know, is our, uh, two-time winner of the King of Wings. So I'm anxious to see how, uh, their burger does. Uh, Sal and Al's Diner in Amherst, and Your Pit in Vermillion.
No, uh, no Bistro 83 this year?
Bistro 83 has taken a break this year. Yep. Yeah, they've participated for two years. Um, and we actually tend to see that with some of our restaurants. They come in and they come out, depending on what's going on with their staff, um, how quickly they can pull their burgers together. Um, I will say, as always, getting the restaurants to get us the materials is a struggle. So we had two or three restaurants that committed and just were not able to get us the burger in time. And so we had to say, "I'm sorry. We cannot hold up our materials anymore." So that does continue to be a struggle. Um, and I know that, you know, their staffing plays into that. Um, so I do have a list of all of the different types of burgers. I'm gonna kind of point out some, some unique ones. We do find that our participants choose the restaurants based on the burger. So, we have been really, I would say, over-communicating, over-educating our restaurants to come up with their most creative because people find that the, the restaurants they want to try based on the burger. Um, if you look, Brew Kettle there has a Wild Boar burger. Um, so that's a little different. It's a little unique. And I think it fo, fits right into a promo that they're doing, uh, for the month. Uh, but I like the, Bootleggers is doing that Korean barbecue burger, which is definitely a little different. Um, and Bootleggers actually joined us on W O I O with that burger, um, because Mutton Jeff's was unavailable. So, um, and then we've got the, the West Side Burger with kielbasa and sauerkraut. Um, I'm not gonna read them on, I encourage everyone to go to visitlorranecounty.com/burgerbattle to check them all out. Uh, the Big Daddy Burger, where you've got egg and bacon. Um, also the Meat Stacker Burger, and that's got smoked ham, pepperoni, salami, bacon.
You passed one up that had two pierogies on it.
That was last year. I believe that was Sal and Al's last year.
West Side Burger.
West Side Burger. Oh, sorry.
With the kielbasa.
Yes. And the short rib. I mean, yeah, they, people went all out this year. Uh, the Quad Onion Burger there over at The Foundry. Am I keeping up? Pressing the wrong button. Um, Mutton Jeff's, they have the Caprese Burger. Uh, Nancy's Main Street has the Supreme Pizza Burger. Uh, Parker's did a firecracker, firecracker burger. It's a little bit on the spicier side. Um, Red Iron did the whiskey burger. Um, there it's basically cooked, um, with whiskey and onion straws. Um, I do find, uh, Sal and Al's, uh, definitely unique. And they've got a Middle Eastern burger. Um, so that sounds with mint and Syrian spices. Um, so it sounds really interesting. Uh, fresh grilled pita. Uh, our friends over at Your Pit BBQ are doing the Wiley Burger. Um, and they've got some applewood smoked bacon, caramelized brown sugar. Um, it sounds really great. Um, so basically, how do you participate? It is really easy. You just stop into one of the participating restaurants. I encourage everybody to check the hours. Um, and when you are there, you get presented with your, um, ballot if you'd like to participate. Um, make sure to ask the waitstaff. They should be presenting the burger battle and telling you that they're part of it. They want to win. Um, you can always pick up a ballot at, um, Visit Lorraine County during our normal business hours, 8 to 4:30. Uh, we're on Amherst there, just south of the Turnpike. Um, you need to stop into at least two participating restaurants. When you have ordered your burger, you get your stamp. I need to make sure that everyone is educated on the fact that one burger equals one stamp. If you share a burger, doesn't matter if there's four people, two people, 18 people, you get one stamp for one order of the burger. Um, and this is really just to keep our accounting of our votes fair. We want to make sure that our competition is legit. Uh, we want to make sure that our restaurants trust us and that we're, um, uh, really not stacking the ballot or giving bigger restaurants a, a bigger advantage. Uh, one vote, vote for per person, and we do audit the results. So, we'll randomly call people, randomly email people. Um, and if we find that there's any information missing or not able to get ahold of anyone, non-working number, that vote is thrown out. Um, so we do take it pretty serious. Uh, the title for overall burger is voted by the public. We, as the Visit Lorraine County team, do crown the most creative burger as a consolary prize. And then diners, um, who provide all of their information and dine at two or more restaurants, um, are entered into a drawing for dinner for four at the winning restaurant. Um, last year, it was really fun to see all of the people that went to all of the different restaurants. I mean, we had people go into 12, 13 restaurants in, in 10 days. So, uh, before I move on to the cupcake crawl, or, I would like to see if there's any questions or anything that I omitted to cover.
No. I think we're good.
Okay. I'm actually gonna ask Amanda to come up. She is the champion of the cupcake crawl, so I'm gonna let her speak to the cupcake crawl.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Um, okay. So, the cupcake crawl is in its third year, too. Uh, this year we've got Blue Rooster Bakehouse, Kelsey Elizabeth Cupcakes in Avon Lake, Kudrowski's in Amherst, Little Devil Cupcakery in Amherst, The Hive Cake Studio in Amherst, uh, What the Cupcakes in Avon. And new this year in Lorraine County is Classy Cakes by Yvonne. Uh, and we still have, um, A Cupcake a Day in Medina and Wind Down and Sweet Cafe in Strongsville. Uh, so this year's prizes, same as last year, are t-shirts. And, uh, grand prize is a, uh, collection of $10 gift cards from each shop. So, we're not doing the dry ingredient jars this year. Um, how it works is you pick up your custom passport from any of the shops or from Visit Lorraine County. You can actually download them from the website this year. Uh, and you take them to each of those locations. So, five out of nine stops, you can get your t-shirt. Uh, complete nine out of nine stops, you get your t-shirt, and you're entered into the grand prize drawing. Um, and it will conclude on October 31st, so it did start yesterday. Um, and we've had, I think, eight people complete it already in one day. So, yes, yeah, so, mm-hmm. Um, uh, we are using advertising on Facebook. Uh, we have an event page. Uh, we have a landing page. And we did have a radio appearance on 104.1 last week, which I did myself. So, um, two people, oh, yep, yes, two people completed it before noon yesterday. Um, they did their five out of nine stops, uh, and they got their t-shirts. I believe they did it the first year, too. So we saw a couple people who have, uh, already done it three years in a row now. Um, and there was a group of ladies that came in with their t-shirts on from last year. And then another group that, uh, they're, they're our fanatics.
Those are cupcake pros.
Yes, yes, they are. Um, and, oop, we've also got, uh, Think Fun this year. Something happens every year with it. Last year, we had a gentleman who started at, I think, just before the shops opened, and he went around on his motorcycle, came in, did his stops, got his t-shirt. Uh, he was the first one to complete it. I believe he's actually from Illyria. Um, and then we had another couple that came in with their dog from Youngstown. They stayed overnight and they planned to actually complete the trail that day. Yes, they did. They came in from out of town. Um, I, I haven't seen them this year, but I'm hoping that they're gonna do it this weekend. Uh, and then there is a new this year, which is fun, a group of bikers that are doing the Cupcake Cruise. So they mapped out their whole route, and, uh, they're gonna be doing it on October 12th with a few other friends. So it's gonna be a big group of bikers. Yep, mm-hmm. So, lots of fun.
Exactly.
Good.
I think, I think that's it. Any questions?
Nope.
Well, just thank, thank you for all the work that you've been doing. I think for the folks here at the meeting today and for us, this is some form of torture. I don't know what the name of it is, when you have to look at all these, uh, amazing burgers and cupcakes. But, uh, you know, this is something when we, um, went in a new direction with Visit Lorraine County is we wanted to, um, also use this as a, as a tool to be able to, you know, is we wanted to also use this as a tool to be able to, you know, promote businesses. And I think it's a good thing to get people in the front door, get them into Lorraine County, see what we have to offer. And hopefully, they tell their friends, and then, you know, they visit, and they stay, and all those things. But this is, it's always just, just been exciting. You and Jen have done a great job of taking us in a different direction. And we're just pleased to see the results that we're seeing.
I'm gonna take a shameless plug here. Let's, let's talk about what's coming up after this now.
Yes.
We've got a lot going on. But actually, I have to say thank you very much for your support because it's really appreciated. These events are going over great, and people are really excited. We have the Shaken and Stirred Cocktail Trail. That starts in the fall, and that goes through the holidays. That went off great last year. It was really fun. Our friends over at Speak of the Devil in Lorraine won the best cocktail in Lorraine County. And we had small groups that actually visited every place. That was kind of their thing. So, I'm sorry. I hope not. We encouraged them to make sure that they were drinking responsibly and to get rides through all of our campaigns. So, I hope that it went out throughout the month. So, that will be coming up in late fall. Additionally, we already have our plans started for Mardi Gras. We are really, really excited for this year's Mardi Gras. We are bringing back Terrence Simeon. We are making the concert and the food showcase better than ever. That's how we're gonna close the week. But last year, we had twenty-five to thirty different partners offering specials. We have had partners come to us and say, "How can I get in?" So, members or non-members, people that are interested in becoming a member, can participate in Mardi Gras by offering some sort of special, whatever it may be. A food special, a drink special, some sort of sale. We have actually had some shops that had a cocktail hour and offered Mardi Gras decorations and things like that. So, we like to get creative. Last year, we also had a window display instead of a parade because in February, you don't know what the weather's going to be. So, we kind of use that as our display. So, we have a lot of opportunities for people to get involved. We want the more people to get involved, the better. This is a countywide initiative, and people are really having fun with it.
I wanna challenge our Main Street partners. I wanna put some kind of grant out there for our Main Street partners and for the Best Main Street. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna do something here. I wanna, I wanna, yeah, I wanna amp that up. So, if we can get the Main Street folks involved and get their merchants involved, maybe we can rate the Best Main Street, the organization that brings the most energy. And we can do a grant maybe to the, to the Main Street itself.
I will, would like to applaud Main Street Wellington. Jenny over there at Main Street Wellington, who went out and personally recruited some of her shops to participate in Mardi Gras. So, absolutely, we'll take that to a new level.
It's been a year of Wellington.
Yeah, it is.
I'm getting tired hearing about them. But that said, you know, we need to put the challenge out there and then reward them for the effort. So, I wanna talk more on that. And also, the food event's gonna be different this year. We had some lessons learned last year from the food event. But we're gonna have some excellent food, just like we did last year, just in a different manner. And also, I wanna talk about having a preact that we haven't discussed yet. Maybe a local boogie man or something like that to just warm up the crowd a little bit this year until, till the main act comes through. And of course, maybe we'll get to see the dancing.
Commissioners.
We've spoken to Dr. Ballinger about this. There is a dance instructor who would like to get involved.
You just left your date behind last year. The spontaneity is.
It was fun.
Is the thing that really made that a lot of fun. Kind of a little shocking to us, but.
Jim and I enjoyed watching some of the commissioners dance from the front row. We know our limitations.
We do. I definitely do. But, you know, the tickets are gonna be moderately and reasonably priced so we can bring out. This is Lorraine County's party. This is about Lorraine County and bringing people into our county, but also the people that live and work here. It's, you have the dates already? I don't remember the date myself, but.
I do.
I know I always put you on the spot when you come here, so you should be, you should be ready for it.
And then you test my eyes and make me show my age here. The week will be September, excuse me, February, approximately February twentieth. And then the concert will be February twenty-ninth. So, then right during the heart of Mardi Gras.
Great way to spice up the winter, the cold, middle of the cold months. And boy, it's not, it's not cold inside the building that night.
It's hot.
Oh, over nine hundred people or so last year. So, it was a party to be at. It was a great party. It will be a great party. Our team has already had multiple meetings. So, I expect that it will be, go outside of hitch.
Just when everybody thought it was over and started to leave, he came back out, started playing some more. So, it was a long evening. It was a nice evening. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna learn from last year. It was our first time, so it'll be better this year. It's gonna be bigger, and I think it's gonna be even more fun.
I will say, I will say that Stalker Center has already been receiving calls for tickets.
Oh, wow.
So, we've been actually, you know, under a little pressure to get those tickets because we have a line of people that are ready to get their tickets. So, we have a couple of different levels of tickets this year. If you're in for just the show, if you're in for dinner and the show, or if you want to make it experience, get a table and bring some companies.
Sponsorships this year. We're doing sponsorship tables, things like that. As it grows, we'll need, you know, more assistance with the event. So, a little, little bit of change up as we grow. But there's always going to be a huge amount of tickets at a very reasonable price so that people can afford to take the family out to this type of activity. And then that, that's what it's about because it's about having that access. But we are doing some VIP sponsorships this year to defray some of the costs. So, it's gonna be a lot of fun.
And lots of prizes. We gave out great prizes.
We flew in Pralines from New Orleans. We had king cakes from Kudrowski's. We gave out, oh, I would probably say over a hundred.
Let me remind you, it was the commissioner's staff up here putting all those baskets together and wrapping them, sanding them in the back of the room here. You know, last minute, all that stuff coming up and making baskets for the giveaways and doing all of that. And so, we all, it was a team effort. Everybody was pulling on the oars pretty hard. So, this year will be, well, hopefully, we'll have a few weeks in advance. It was right down to the wire last year.
Thinking of things and adding it.
Well, and we wanted to be on our toes, right? Yes.
I wanna get something on the website.
Twenty eighth, oh, the concert, the twenty ninth.
Website saying, you know, people know it's here. Be prepared.
Absolutely, we're working on that. Thank you. Thanks for your support.
You, great job.
We had no idea what to expect from that, and it was so fun. It was so fun.
I still have the video of the blackmail you was.
Yeah, right.
Every now and then, those pop up on Facebook. Do me a favor?
After all the food and fun, now we gotta get back to business.
For real work. Yeah, now that we're hungry.
Yeah, starving.
Under resolutions, we have no investments appropriations.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Transfers.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Travel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Bills.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners.
That would be County Administrator Jim Cordez. Good morning.
It has been a good morning. Well, I definitely need an executive session. We started talking about our labor agreements yesterday, and I wanna have more discussion on that this morning. I also have some potential matters, maybe in IT, Crime Lab. We'll talk about workforce development. Also, I'm almost finishing a purchase of real estate in one pending legal matter. And also, potential sale of real estate. All of those matters are, I'll run the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion. So, to ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session, and we talk about those matters that have outlined. Thank you.
Authorize the use of course of general liability insurance instead of individual surety bonds for officers, employees, and appointees who are otherwise required or allowed to give bond before entering upon the discharge duties in accordance with the Highway Code three point oh six one and House Bill two ninety-one.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Jerry, did you have something?
Commissioners, could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I'm not sure if you saw my email on that. This is only gonna apply prospectively. So, it will not apply to any of the commissioners until they start their new terms. Because the way the statute words is this policy has to be in effect when you start your duties and when you start your employment. And I kind of started a thing statewide because, you know, some people hire employees every year. Anyway, I just wanted you to be aware, this isn't gonna automatically remove all our employees and people from doing their bonds until it processes through.
Under Javon Family, authorize purchase service agreement with Lorraine County Transit in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, effective October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and authorize director to execute half the Board of Prosecutor's approval list form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service with Future Age Inc., DBA, provide a ride in the amount of four hundred thousand to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for federal fiscal year two thousand and twenty, effective October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutor's approval list form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Merricab Inc. in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for fiscal year, federal fiscal year two thousand and twenty, effective October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutor's approval list form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Men Resolution nineteen one forty-eight adopted March thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen for purchase service contract with ES Consulting of Ontario, Ohio to provide Microsoft Access programming and form development. Said amendment is to Kimberly Boss with continued ride services as an independent contractor to fulfill the contract terms and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutor's approval list form.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorize purchase agreement with CND LLC Lorraine in the amount of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents to provide professional development training classes to TANF and FAIT recipients in federal fiscal year two thousand and twenty, effective October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutor's approval list form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Lorraine County Office on Aging in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, nineteen cents for toy deal twenty, social service block grant funded services for federal fiscal year two thousand and twenty, effective October first, two thousand and nineteen through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and authorize director to execute an agreement on behalf of the Board of Prosecutor's approval list form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, this is a new thing that we just recently brought forward for Office on Aging, correct? And we just do that like last year was the first year?
Which one do you want?
Title twenty money for, from John Family Services to the adult.
Number fifteen?
Number fifteen.
Yes.
Yeah, so, that's good job because they didn't used to get that money.
Yes, you know, some, again, they, they only have a certain amount of this funds, you know, the Title twenty funds to move around. So, yes, they, they, they've been now supporting the seniors with some of those funds.
I'm really happy about that, so, good job.
Mr. Lundey.
So, I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
I thought Jim was gonna say something.
I just got one more here. I'm just looking for it on the, I sent these all over here, and I think I missed one, so.
Oh.
Did you have one for the, for the children's services and Family First Council? Excuse me, Family First Council and John Family Services?
That's next week.
The next one?
No, next week she said.
Next week, that's next week.
Do that next week? All right, I'm just trying to.
Making sure.
I wanna do it now, but yeah, I have it on for next week.
All right.
Because it was late. Okay. Approve an intern M U with children's services in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-two for kinship caregiver program, effective retroactive to July first, two thousand and nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, with option for two, one-year renewals.
So move.
Second.
You wanna talk a little bit about that kinship program?
Sure.
I think we have somebody here, but I can try to wing it if.
Jen's here.
Who's here?
Jen. Keys?
You wanna, well, I could do it if you, I could do it. It's up to you.
Yeah, just.
You know, a lot of times, what, what happens here is that children that are eligible for services, the parents, for various reasons, are not providing guardianship either through being MIA or being incarcerated or being.
Gone.
Gone. Could be in rehab, you know, for various reasons. Grandparents are providing, you know, care or family members. What this program does, it allows those children to receive the benefits that they would receive if they were in the home and were in the eligible home. In the past, when, when, when they weren't in the care of those, those folks, they, they didn't receive those benefits.
Like because the grandparents make too much money, they wouldn't qualify?
Right. Okay, so it's really a unique program to aid people who take in children and other family members that would be eligible recipients of benefits to take the burden off these generous people who pick up responsibility at times of need without feeling the penalty of not being able to access those services. And this is something a little bit different and a different look. And it works through the children's services, and there's all kinds of qualifiers that they have to go through. It's, and, and the reason it's backdated a bit, it's been on my desk, and I've worked with, you know, talking with them over there about it. And I should've moved this a little bit quicker, but I wanted to understand what they were doing with children's services. I, I think it's going to really relieve some of the burden on, on, on a lot of folks that are struggling. And a lot of that struggling has to do with the addiction that you guys have been talking about for, for a long time. So, many, many family members have stepped in to try to assist families, only to find that they can't act. They hadn't been able to access a lot of different services. So, we're looking forward to this working for our community.
That's great.
Yeah, we hear.
Did I explain that well?[1682.51] Thank you.
Yeah, we hear these stories throughout the community where somebody says, wow, I, you know, my sister's had drug problems and now I've got to take care of her three daughters and I certainly didn't budget for this, I didn't plan for this, I didn't have my house set up for this. You know, grandparents, this is part of the, the epidemic in, in the county and the fallout from the whole thing. And in addition to, you know, babies being born with withdrawal symptoms. It's, it's a very, very serious issue, but this is some of the behind the scenes stuff that people aren't aware is happening in the county. And that's why we've got to address the issue.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Under solid waste, extend the contract with Green Wave Computer Recycling LLC of Indianapolis, Indiana for e-scrap collection and recycling services. And this should be year 2020, not 2010. I'm not going backwards.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Engineer accept on behalf of Eene Township, the Public Roads and Mallards Edge subdivision numbers three and four, off State Route 82, Eene Township, receive the three-year maintenance guarantee. Plaid is recorded in volume 102, page 26, volume 106, page 49, of Lorraine County Records of Platts. This loop township road is now completed as follows. Legends Way and North Legends Way Township Road T 316 and 328 from northwest terminus to southwest terminus of .508 miles in length.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Health Department, approve change order number one to Lucas Plumbing and Heating Inc. in the amount of $2,210 for changes in location of equipment to comply with ADA requirements of the Public Health Department building.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve amendment number one to earmark commensary services contract. Amendment is to reflect an extension until February 14, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to make a public comment this morning? Mr. Pichoni, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mike Pichoni. I stand as a veteran, as a senior citizen, and as a handicapped. I stand before you because of the property that I own on 14871, State Route 301, where the ditch is on between the property of mine and other peoples, that the Commissioners had come out and checked when we had flooding a few years back, three years, and it was approved for them to come out and clean the ditch in the back and on the side and they stopped on the side, it didn't, it didn't come all the way. And there was a fee attached to our taxes. And it's my understanding that, that the amount that is supposed to have gone for the finishing, this and the maintenance of this ditch has been transferred. And I, as far as I'm concerned, I haven't seen anything done in two years on any, any of my property at all, at all. And my, from the road to my garage is one-tenth of a mile. Okay? And I maintain a ditch on my own, but the thing of it is, is if I'm going to be taxed for it, if I'm going to have something amended to my taxes for that fee and it's not being done, I want it removed. That's all. That's all. I mean, and basically, I'm only here as one person now. Thank you.
Your address again, Mike?
Pardon?
Your address again.
14871, State Route 301.
Okay, we'll look into that. Yeah, we'll look into it.
Thank you very much.
We'll look into it and we'll get back to you, Mike. Others wishing to address the board this morning? Okay. Seeing none?
Oh. Mr. Cortez.
That was quick. I'll explain that to you.
Okay.
We've had a long morning, I'll yield. We have a lot to do.
I'm not sure what Hal's doing, I think he's doing the Cleveland Indian thing, you know, between Indian innings, or are you just doing something?
He's having fun back there.
I've got, I've got several items pending litigation, mostly updates and mostly optimistic updates.
Well, there we go.
Updates.
Good.
Sorry you left, but if any of you want to discuss it, I'll tell you what that is.
You mean later? Let's, let's just.
Well.
Right now then?
That's fine. Okay, yeah, Mr. Pichoni had raised a point, but he's left, so we'll get back in touch with him, but was there something you wanted to elaborate on?
Donna and myself walked his property two years ago, call it up. We actually did a favor out there.
We can grab Mr. Pichoni before he leaves? He may have already headed down the elevator. Though we were, I didn't know we were.
Public comment.
Right, yeah, not a public comment, but I didn't know we were prepared to respond right now, otherwise I would have made sure he didn't leave the room so he could hear it.
I, you know, again, one of the things is we don't.
Right, we don't.
I follow the rules.
Exactly.
Sometimes, most times.
Amen is. The comments and then we'll get back to people responding later. There is.
There we go.
Hey, Mike, we wanted to.
You had me leave then.
Oh, I apologize for that, we didn't know you were leaving, so, we didn't know you were leaving. Hey, Mike?
About your ditch.
Mike? Mike, grab a.
You can come and finish.
Grab, grab. Okay, grab a seat, Mike, we'll.
You had, you had a company come and do the, do the work, remove, remove the trees.
Mike.
You're not, you're not supposed to.
You've got trees that are broke down, that are laying on the property, next to my property. They haven't even finished cleaning it up.
Mike, if you'll just, uh.
If you want that, that's, that's the truth.
Okay, you're gonna have to.
I don't need to bring pictures of it, all you got to do is come down there and look at it.
We understand you're upset, Mike, if you'd grab a seat, we're trying to give you some answers, so if you.
You got to say.
We apologize that you left the room, we didn't know you were leaving.
You didn't do anything.
We looked up and saw that you left the room, Mike, just being fair, wasn't aware that you left the room.
We, we went out to your, we went out to your property, you and I walked your property.
You walked the property.
You were with me before.
Right. And Don, Don walked the property. What we did, we sent the Formatics team out there.
Right.
To, we called it a practice run, there was a lot of Formities on the, on the back end of the property. And this gentleman does take excellent care of his property, by the way, and the ditch one.
I do for an old man.
An old man too, we're both old. The, the, but there was some Mighties way in the back. And then the team went back there and, and what did they do back there?
To my recollection, they sprayed and actually had invited some of the township road supervisors, it was done as a demonstration project on how to control frag mighties. And then if I recall correctly, they came back later to cut and to remove the frag mighties. I'm not aware of any tree cutting or removal of limbs or anything like that that they would have done, it would have been with backpack sprayers, weed whackers, and labor.
Did they, did they fail to remove the debris from the back when they did the frag mighties removal?
I don't know about debris, but I still got whole trees that are down.
I don't, we didn't take.
Probably removed the, the debris around the ditch in, in the rear of all of the other people's property that is on their property, that are my neighbors, the five or six neighbors that I have, they probably removed all of that small stuff.
I remember your neighbor coming out when we were walking, we also.
Right, the older lady, and she still cuts her grass at 88 years old.
The, so, but we did not do any tree removal or limb removal.
They removed some trees. But they, they left trees and they, and they left, and they left some, uh, on, on, where the ditch goes through, on Parsons Road, there are pieces that are probably four or five pieces that are part of the trees that were at least 10-foot in diameter.
Were they saw cut?
Pardon?
Were they saw cut, did somebody saw cut them?
They, somebody came and cut them and I don't know who did it, but they left them there, whoever left them there.
We, we don't presently have a project in that ditch, but what we'll do.
I'm gonna say, we'll talk to the county engineer, we're.
Because we, we did not do any saw cutting of trees, we did frag mighties removal, we, we took under our grant, we, we needed an area for training, so in order to do some work that could aid in the flow and alleviate some of that flooding back there, we took the crew back there and we did a demonstration training session back there to remove the frag mighties. I was afraid that we had left frag mighty debris there, I thought we took that debris out, but we did not do any tree cutting or limb cutting or anything else, but we'll go out there and take a look, we know where you are.
Let me know when you come.
And.
You're gonna walk with me.
I know that, sir.
We will.
And if I may, now, Mr. Pichoni lives on Cobelt Ditch and Cobelt runs into King. We are currently under review at Ohio Department of Natural Resources on the plans for the improvement to the King Ditch. And then next year, we will be working on the ditch segment that goes through Mr. Pichoni's property, as well as several other, and comes into the King Ditch.
Let's go take a look, see if somebody's cut the trees back there, okay? And if somebody's cut and dropped them in the ditch, I'd be interested. There had been some clearing that had been done, but all of that should have been removed, and that was two years ago on King Ditch, I do not.
Believe anything was done on Cobelt.
Small debris, but what I'm making a, a comment on is there are trees that were cut down, there's at least two next to my property, that are probably well over 65 to 70 feet in length that are laying down there. And, and the thing of it is, is the, the reason that the ditch started, and you know it as well, because you were there when I told all of you, is the, the gentleman that lived across the street that purchased that property, who completely, who's a millionaire, okay? He did his ditch, the same ditch, without any approval of the state, any approval of the county, any approval of the township. Did it on his own. And then when he cleaned his ditch, that caused all of that water to come into our area, flooding it, and when I brought you out there, it was bef, it was for the main reason, because it got so high, it was within two feet of the highway. And I don't need that to have to have worry about somebody having an accident on that highway, because there's a, it's, it's a small bridge with railing there. And it, as a person who used to work a night shift and we don't see anything, if something like that happens, I would not want to answer that call. I wore a badge and a gun in the, in the 70s for $4 an hour.
We will, we will.
The thing of it is. Is we do not, I, I, I was very concerned of it, and as a result of that concern, we decided, the, the gentleman here decided that we should have it looked at and, and taken care of. And it was taken care of in behind, but it was also left unfinished, as far as I'm concerned.
Once again, let me, let me state this to you, we will come take a look, we did not cut any trees.
I didn't see you.
There are no. All people didn't cut any trees.
Okay.
But we will come take a look and try to find out what happened.
What happened, right.
I can tell you that I did not order anybody or pay anybody to cut trees. Basically what I did is had them pull big weeds, you know, frag mighties, they get pretty tall, they're pretty nasty, and they clog up a lot of the waterways. But I'm gonna ask Don, go out there, take our folks out and take a look, and let's see if we can find out if they, the people that are working on the King Ditch got a little too aggressive and moved over some, and if they did, then we gotta, we gotta figure out why they, what, what they did. And if they're responsible, we'll hold them accountable as best we, you know, as best we can, they gotta get them out of there, but if. Mr. Pichoni, I'm, I'm not a tree detective, you know, if somebody went in there and cut those trees down, I, I, I'll try to find out and help you, but I, I don't know, I know we didn't do it, okay?
Okay. So we'll set that.
It was on my property, they have done, they did nothing on my property.
I think it'd be fearful to. Come on, your property.
But we have your contact information, right? And Don will be in direct contact with you and we'll set up that time to come up, take a look.
What is right is right, what's wrong is wrong, if there's an in-between, that's what we're discussing, the in-between.
Sure, well, we want to make sure that.
The in-between.
We will look into it and.
I apologize for you if I took too much of your time, but I want to thank you for your time.
Yeah, we, we apologize that you slipped out on us, we didn't realize we were gonna address it, so.
Something you don't know about, and you didn't do.
Okay, okay.
Let's all take a field trip.
Mike, thank you. We'll be in touch. Okay. Breakfast. Okay. Jerry gave us his update, so I guess we're ready for the Commissioners' report.
Okay.
What did Jerry have?
He said, good litigation or good updates. Good updates.
I'm optimistic, yes.
Yeah.
We only have to give half what we should give.
All right.
Okay, so, let's start with Thursday evening, we all attended a delicious fundraiser for Mayor Hunter in the heart of Lorraine County at Sugar Creek in Sheffield Village, had a great turnout, food was excellent. Saturday, I attended the groundbreaking ceremony of the 12 new units for the Valor Home. They had a bike run and a fundraising to help raise money for, to complete the project, and I want to thank those who participated, especially Mike Farrar, he brought out about 20 adults, young adults, they're, they're called Aces, it used to be Pace. And they, they came out, they set it up, they, they served, they, they tore it down, they did everything, they did a really nice job. Let's see, oh, they have, they're having a fundraiser I want to tell you about. It's Oktoberfest at the VFW Post 1662, and that is going to be October 24th from 5:30, doors open at 5, to 7:30, it's a cash bar until 9, $20. At Post 1662 is 165 Cleveland Avenue in Amherst, and Poggy's gonna do the cooking, they're gonna have live music from Music on a Mission, so hopefully you can attend that. Sunday, Commissioner Swita and I, along with Mr. Cortez and Dr. Ballinger, attended the Second Harvest Food Bank where they had a big fundraiser at the facility on Bottom Heart in Lorraine, it was overflowing with people, food from local area restaurant tastings, and it was a really nice event, they also had music.
Who won?
I don't know.
County Community College.
I didn't know that.
They got first place.
You left, that's right, you left.
Oh, they were, they did it.
They won Best Food Award by Critics' Choice.
I'll tell you, I had some of the desserts, and the desserts were outstanding.
So the Spitzer Conference Center, they had, they had popular category, and then they had, they had critics, they had three go around and rate all the food, and they won number one by Critics' Choice.
Nice.
So.
An exceptional job.
They sure do. Then, let's see, that was Sunday. Monday, we were all in attendance for Judge Walther's Veterans Treatment Court, it was his 12th graduation, and I think there's been about 30 graduates so far, and I just want to commend Judge Walther for, and his treatment team for what they do, and they're peer support members, and it's all veterans helping veterans, and they do such an outstanding job. Clifton Oliver was the speaker, and he was one of the first graduates in the program, and he told a story to give hope and help for those others in the program sitting there listening. And he turned his life around, and there were other graduates in the room who also were very appreciative of the program and getting a second chance at life. And then yesterday, as reported, we had our final public hearing for the Building Department, and I truly believe this is something that should have been in place long before now, and I'm hoping with maybe a few tweaks that we can move this forward, protecting our residents in the unincorporated areas, like most people in the county are already kept from harm, so I think this is a great idea and it needs to be done, and hopefully sooner than later, in my report.
I just want to say congratulations to Mayor Hunter for his event held there at Sugar Creek, very nice event, a lot of folks there, wow, and, and great food. Auditor Craig Snodgrass held an event as well over at Legacy on Sunday, always very Always very well attended and, uh, want to thank both of them for their public service and all they do in the community. Um, also want to congratulate the, uh, Lorraine County Chapter, the National Council Negro Women, uh, for their event on Saturday, recognizing, uh, women of achievement. Uh, my wife was also honored with one of those, uh, awards and was very appreciative of that. Uh, I know she works hard because I don't see her till about nine o'clock at night, uh, throughout the week when she's meeting with her clients and helping people who are battling mental health and addiction issues. Um, the Veterans Treatment Court graduation, Judge Walther doing an amazing job with his leadership team over there with their twelfth graduation. And you hear so many of these, uh, veterans who are so appreciative and how they point out at the beginning of the program how they just wanted nothing to do with it. Uh, they were mad at the judge, they were mad at their mentors. And at the end, they realized that everybody was there just to, uh, lift them up and give them the support they needed, the love they needed, the respect they wanted, uh, to help guide them, uh, back on the path to turning their lives around. And, and what's great is when you see people are getting back to work, they're getting back to their families, they're getting back to their kids. Um, you know, that's, that's what it's all about. And for all the service that the veterans have provided for this country and this community, I think it's important that we go that extra mile to help them turn their lives around. And- And then also, uh, uh, we had our public hearing yesterday on the Building Department. You may have read that. That was a big page one story in the paper today. And, you know, this, this board takes, um, the safety of, of families in this community, uh, very seriously. You know, we definitely see this as a, uh, consumer issue. One that protects consumers when they're making their largest purchase. And we want to make sure that that's done right. We also want to make sure when families go to bed at night, uh, they're not gonna have an electrical fire where somebody ends up losing their life. And so we want to make sure things are done right, people are protected. Uh, not everyone out there is, is skilled to be able to do a lot of work on their own and they have to rely on others to get it done. But especially with the growth that we're experiencing in Lorraine County, we want to make sure that consumers are protected. You know, it's the biggest purchase that they're certainly going to make and we think it's a good thing for the county. For those townships that aren't growing as much, I, as I've said before, I don't think they'll even know the Building Department's there. Um, but this is, uh, primarily going to help out a lot of those that are, um, growing quickly. And as I said, overall, it's about the, the safety and welfare of, of the citizens. So, uh, looking forward to us eventually taking, uh, official action on it. Yep.
Finished?
Finished.
All right, so Thursday afternoon, we had a meeting of our Planning Commission. And one of the things that we voted to approve some zoning on was for Blessing House, who is attempting to go into, uh, the, um, St. Vincent, uh, property over there off on North Ridge Road. And if they are able to move the facility, they're gonna be able to increase to twenty-eight beds. And they'll have a more, um, family-style environment. They will have a playground for children. Uh, just a better facility and be able to serve more families. In a discussion I had privately with them, uh, they expressed the, the fact that with larger families, sometimes they're full now just when one family shows up on the door. So, uh, very good, uh, uh, organization. And I'm looking forward to the successful, um, completion of that project. They're still, uh, halfway through it. On Saturday morning, I want to thank Tom Kelly, Jessica and his staff, as well as Sheffield Village Police Fire and Rescue. They had a community emergency response event. And, uh, folks come out, it's always fun to see all the little children get in there and beep all the horns and run the sirens, but they had beautiful weather for it. It was a nice event. And I know that takes their Saturdays to go out and do these events, but it's important that people see, uh, the equipment and see the team. And they were also given handbooks on emergency evacuations and things to do and protocol for, uh, common emergencies and not so common. I did attend also with Commissioner Lundey, the NCNW luncheon, and a shout out to his wife, Marva Jones, who, um, was not only, uh, recognized, but she had her whole family there in support of her, which was very nice. And I, I also know Marva works very hard, very committed to her patients. I want to congratulate Lorraine County Farm Bureau. They had another successful farm tour. This year, it was good weather. And what that is, it's a self-guided tour where they have a list of, of farms that you can visit on, on your schedule. And it's a great thing to show, uh, young and old to see how these family farms operate. The First Lantino Festival was scheduled for Black River Landing. They did cancel because of weather. I believe they'll be rescheduling. And there was a family, uh, the, the Kevin Addy family had a fundraiser steak fry on Saturday night as well to raise funds for, he had a, uh, accident and has lost a, a hand. And the money that they're raising will go a long way in helping him. Sunday morning was a carb morning because there were pancakes at Camden Township Fire Department as well as Metro Parks at Carlisle. Trying to space these, a pancake at each stop. And, uh, both of them did a nice job. The food was delicious. In the afternoon, there was a Warrington spaghetti fundraiser in North Ridgeville at the VFW. Uh, for those who are not aware, the, uh, Warrington is a CO out at Grafton and he was in a bad accident that, um, he is, he's not capable of even walking yet. So this was a fundraiser to help them raise funds for the medical expenses. And, and again, Second Harvest Generous Healthings was great as always. We got out just before the wind and the storm really kicked in. Uh, Monday, the Veteran Treatment Court, Clifton Oliver, the, big shout out to him. He really did do a, a very good job addressing the group. And as Commissioner Lundey said about how the folks get into the program, they're angry at the judges. I think my takeaway was one of them said, he told Judge Walther, "I wanted to strangle you, but I didn't." And they go full circle and they leave the courtroom telling him they love him, so. Uh, let's see here. I heard that Johnson and Johnson just settled with Cuyahoga and Medina Counties. Hopefully, we're going to have some, uh, settlement coming our direction soon so that when we're looking at our veteran, veteran treatment courts and all of the, uh, the, still the strong addiction uh, disaster that we're facing. Over the weekend, Franklin County had ten overdose deaths. And the numbers are not coming down and there are still plenty of issues out there that we need to address. So, um, looking forward to seeing something come our way so that we can face that crisis head on. Uh, the second, uh, hearing for our Building Department, again, we can't stress enough the liability. We're asking people to go to, conform to an accepted practice that's used in predominantly every city that, that I know of.
In county.
Excuse me, in the county. This is nothing new. We're looking for minimum standards. We're not enhancing or extending standards. And I look at the liability piece that if, if you decide that that isn't something your citizens need or require and something happens, where's the culpability on that? If you could have saved somebody or, or helped avoid a fire, electrocution, a, uh, carbon monoxide death. Um, last, last evening, I was at the Lorraine Women Dems meeting and I'm on their holiday party committee. We adopt a charity and we are adopting one that I've been able to participate in, Sleep in Heavenly Peace. I notified Roger Dorsey that, uh, the charity component, we're going to ask everyone who attends to either contribute bunk bed sheets, bedding, or stuffed animals for children. So, uh, that concludes my report. Thank you.
So, next Wednesday, two o'clock, Records Commission meeting, Board Correspondents.
I would move that the reading be waived.
Second?
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
Aye.
I see no other business at this time. I would move that we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the County Administrator and the Assistant County Prosecutor.
I'll second.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sveda?
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.